April 7th, 2021, and the time is 7:16. And I am calling to order the Baldwin Park City Council regular virtual meeting. And I believe we have an invocation by Dr. Flores.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate the opportunity. Appreciate all that you all do for the city. Let us pray. In Salmo 121, he said, "I'll raise my eyes to the mountains. Where will my help come from? My help comes from Jehovah, who has made the skies and the earth. He will give you a foot to the shield. Nor will he sleep in what he has guarded. And here he will not be deserved, nor will he sleep in what Israel protects." Heavenly Father, we thank you that you are watching over our city. I thank you, God, that you have appointed leaders who have given themselves up for a public service. We thank you for their desire to want to do what's best that honors you and serves your people at Baldwin Park effectively and efficiently. We ask for your grace and your mercy over our city today and over our leaders. There's much pain, there's much loss. And yet, God, there's much hope and there's much prosperity for us in which we can gain. We ask your blessing. Give us your wisdom upon our leaders today. May we seek your wisdom and may we act accordingly, Lord. Seek justice, Lord. Do the right thing and walk humbly before you. In Christ Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Thank you for that.
Thank you, thank you.
Yeah, and at this point, we will do the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you're able to stand, please go ahead and stand. I will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Ready, begin. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America.
To the republic, to the very public. One nation, under God, indivisible, infinite, and just for...
For all, for all.
Thank you. City Clerk, full call, please.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. Councilmember Daniel Damian.
Here.
Councilmember Monica Garcia.
Here.
Councilmember Paul Hernandez.
Present.
Mayor Pro Tem Alejandra Avila, here. And Mayor Emmanuel Estrada.
Here. Thank you, City Clerk.
Mayor, Marie Contreras is here too.
Marie Contreras. Yeah, you cannot forget Marie. So Marie is here. Glad to hear. Thank you.
Thank you.
And then, where is... City Attorney, is there anything to report out from closed session?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. The City Council did consider items in closed session. They took no final action, and therefore, there's no reportable action.
Great. And so I believe at this point, I can make a motion to adjourn the special meeting.
Yes, sir.
Great, thank you. Is there any objections? None. So, meeting is a... Special meeting is adjourned, and we continue on with our regular meeting. Important announcement. Councilor also members of the Board of Directors of the Housing Authority, which is concurrently convening with the City Council this evening. And each council member is paid an additional stipend of $30 for attending the Housing Authority meeting. And at this moment, we can move on to proclamations, commendations, and presentations. And then, is Ms. Lucero here with us? I believe not, but we did want to congratulate Ms. Christina Lucero, School Board President, Baldwin Park Unified School District, for being one of, I believe, Assemblywoman's... Women of the District. Is that correct? So, a big congratulations to her. And then I believe we have a Dona Life Month proclamation, and that's going to be presented to Ms. Jolene Vargas from One Legacy.
Would you like me to speak?
Yeah.
Okay. Hi, how are you? Good. I am a One Legacy Ambassador for the city of Baldwin Park. I want to just... We're bringing awareness in the month of April to... A lot of people are waiting right now, over 100,000 in the United States. Just in California, there's over 23,000 waiting. In California, there's 19,000 people waiting just for a kidney. And I just happened to be one of those that was waiting a year and a half ago. And I got the phone call and received my third transplant in 30 years. Wow. I want to thank Mayor Estrada and City Council for recognizing April is Donate Life Month.
Great. And thank you, Jolene, for being here with us. I know that this is something that you're very passionate about. So, you know, very excited to have you here. I've attended some of those One Legacy events. And there's some great information on there, right? And I don't know if you mentioned the number, but I believe, you know, one person donating can save up to 50 lives or something like that.
It could save just in organs, it's eight lives. And in tissue, it's over 75. Some can go up to 2,000, just in tissue.
How about blood?
Blood. Blood is another organization, but that does help save a lot of lives.
Yeah, American Red Cross.
There's a lot of different organizations dealing with that. But just with organs, I am of mixed race. So the third kidney was considered, from what I was told, a gift from God, because I was really hard to match. And they were looking at seven to 12 years for me to receive a kidney. And I was on the list 22 months.
Wow.
So, I was very lucky. And I know Ms. Alexandra... Alejandra, I'm sorry. From when my son was in elementary, junior high. And she seen me when I was waiting for a kidney back then.
Yes. And if I may, I'd like to say something, please.
Go ahead, Mayor Pro Tem.
Thank you, Jolene, for being here. I was really excited to see your name there. And I get very emotional, because like she said, I've known her for many, many years. And she has always been a fighter, I kid you not. She didn't let this stop her. She... I would... I remember where she would come back from the doctor, just getting from... What is it called, Jolene? Help me.
Dialysis.
From her dialysis. Tired and weak, but if she needed to be at the school, she was there. She was there for her son, volunteering as a parent, just a fighter and an overall wonderful person. So I want to congratulate you. I'm very excited. I'm very excited for you. And I commend you. You have never given up. And she's always been so positive. She had never lost hope. And she, again, she was radiant all the time, positive as six. You never knew the suffering she was holding inside, which I'm sure she was. But she never showed it. She just felt... She was just strong all the time, and she was there, and she did what she needed to do. And I know you will continue to do that, and you will continue to help others. And I mean, I'm very excited. I'm very excited that you got your donation. And I wish you well and I wish you health, Jolene. It's nice seeing you.
Thank you. It's nice seeing you too. And you know, my son actually graduated through this Baldwin Park School District. And he works for Microsoft now in Seattle. So, without schools in the city of Baldwin Park, I don't think my son would be where he's at right now.
And his great mama.
Thank you.
Mayor Pro Tem is gonna make all of us... All of our voices start to crack. She's gonna make everybody cry.
Well, I wish you would have met her when I met her. And you would know exactly what I'm talking about. She looks super healthy right now. And she was just so sick, but she was a fighter. She would do whatever she needed to do to get through it. And look at her. Here she is with us. Thank God.
Thank you.
And I've only met Jolene a couple of months ago, but you know, she always has that energy. And she's always, you know, she's always a diligent ambassador of One Legacy. And I think that's something to respect, right? You... Not only did you go through something and you were able to take it on and be successful, but you pushed for it, right? And you educate people on that issue. And you know, you... Who knows how many lives you've saved by now? So you've done something really good to come out of this. And I respect that.
Thank you very much. But I also will be back in November and December to bug you. But this time, it's gonna be for brunch.
Anytime, Jolene.
Thank you.
Thank you for being here, Jolene.
Thank you very much for having me.
Congratulations.
Thank you.
And then, of course, we have Rosa Linda Sally on with us, who is a resident of the city of Baldwin Park. And she's very involved in Parks and Recs, I believe, with Manny. And we wanted to present to her our proclamation denouncing Asian hate crimes.
Yeah. Should I speak now?
Yes. How are you doing?
Yeah. Thank you very much, Mr. Mayor and all the council members. Each and every one of you. It's the proclamation. I'm honored to accept the reward... Oh, no, the award for the proclamation. Denouncing stigmatization, racism, and xenophobia against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders. We used to be very, very, what you call... Everybody love each other, get together. All the races together, respect each other, and help each other. Live in harmony, peace and harmony. For this race recently, you can see on the various media, news media and internet recently, what happened. It's a bad energy. So we have to make it into a positive energy with peace and harmony. So let's work together to eliminate prejudice and harm between people and make our city and our society better. We will contribute to... Continue to contribute our best efforts to the development of this city, Baldwin Park. Thank you again. And the best of health to each one of you, okay? And everybody, every citizen in Baldwin Park. All the residents in Baldwin Park. Thank you again.
Thank you. Thank you for being with us today.
Yeah, thanks for inviting me.
Of course. Glad to have you here. And of course, it's very something important that we make a statement and we take a stance against, you know, the uninformed narratives that have been taking on in the mainstream news. And not necessarily the mainstream news, but you know, certain people with power and how they misuse it. Here in Baldwin Park, I think we are... I don't think I know that we are proud and excited about our diversity. And we are all for social integration, making sure that every single resident and member of our community has a place in our society, so that they feel safe and that they feel empowered and that they know that they're part of something.
Mayor.
That's true. Okay.
Mayor. I just want to share that this last Saturday, I took part in the march that Almonte held. There was a lot of cities involved. It was a very peaceful march. And I commend them. It was very well organized. So, like you said, let's stand together against crimes, against Asians, and against everybody. We should all unite. As a matter of fact, they did at that rally, they did say maybe Baldwin Park should take the next march. So I said I would give you the message, so we can organize.
Yeah. And that's... I'm all for it. You know, we can have a presentation here, and we can do that. I know Mayor Pro Tem was there. I saw it. And I believe you were there with a couple of other local representatives. Is that correct?
Yes, yes, I was there. From the Office of Assemblywoman Rubio, from the Water Board, our local Water Board. There was just a lot of agencies there. It's hard to name everybody, but there was a lot of different cities involved. It was a very nice event again. And they called out the local cities next to Almonte to take part in it. So they said Baldwin Park, so we must do something.
Yeah, well, we... I'm sure the council and staff here welcome that challenge. We are here to stand with our neighbors. And I'm in full support of that. So thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem, for representing us at that. I know I saw a couple of other mayors and city council members out there. So I'm glad to know that many of our Baldwin Park representatives were there as well.
Thank you.
Mayor.
Yeah, was that Councilmember Hernandez? Go ahead.
Thank you. You know, this has been very, you know, close to my heart. You know, the rise of crime and hate, hate crime that's been happening, you know, against, you know, our Asian Pacificer Islanders, you know, neighbors and friends. You know, my first professional career, as I tell folks, is... was working in the Korean-American Federation and the Korean consulate office many, many years ago. They, you know, they accepted me, you know, with open arms and, you know, knowing what I know from, you know, working in that organization and those communities. You know, Southern California is the largest Asian populations outside of, you know, mainland China or even South Korea and other locations. So we, you know, this place is called, you know, home to many others across the country. But, you know, our state also has a history of, you know, discrimination, you know, with the anti-inclusion acts that occurred back in the early 1800s. And we certainly have moved forward from that. You know, with the Saigu riots that occurred, you know, during 1994, if I'm correctly. The LA unrests. That certainly affected a lot of Korean-American business owners that had businesses affected and targeted during that period of time. So this is just, again, another blatant attack on our community. Not only those neighbors here in Baldwin Park, but across the county. So again, I stand with all of you and everything else that we've all been doing to, you know, publicly stand out, speak out against this, but more importantly, share, you know, those stories of support and comfort from our neighbors when we meet them and see them. I have a neighbor now who's, you know, going through and speaking to me very much about, you know, the atrocities that are happening in what, you know, used to be known as Burma, Myar. So this is something that's, you know, very close to, you know, that hits home in our own neighborhood. When we see these type of things that are happening, not only across here in the United States, but again, even overseas. So that is something, you know, again, we welcome, you know, having a march, you know, whether that's a march or more importantly. I know our police department has been more vigilant during these times and keeping, you know, keeping aware of, not only for our seniors and other folks, but just in general. So just want to make sure that our residents understand that, you know, this is something that we take very seriously. And same with our police departments. And, you know, we're not gonna stand for any of this type of bigotry actions or talks towards any of our residents. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Did any other councilmembers have any comment?
Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Yeah, I just want to stand in solidarity and echo, you know, all of your comments. And I'm so glad that we are taking a position on this, because it was something that I was, you know, definitely wanting to do. So, you know, thank you for bringing it to the council this evening. And I agree that we do need to rally with our neighboring cities and really take a very strong position in speaking out against the attacks on the Asian community. You know, I think that we know here in this community what that has felt like, what that has been like. Some of us have that personal, you know, story. Some of us have observed, you know, just the attacks on the Latino community and specifically the Mexican, you know, American community. And now we see it happening to our neighbors, you know, within the Asian community. And so my heart really goes out to those, you know, those who have recently been victimized, but also just to the community that has been, more recently, living in fear. And, you know, and why? You know, because of what we've experienced globally and, you know, through this pandemic and hate speech that was spewed by, unfortunately, you know, leaders of our country. And it's just a really sad moment for us, you know, and not only in our community, but in the United States. And so definitely wanted to join with all of you in taking a very strong position and speaking out against what's happening to, you know, our Asian neighbors and community. And if anybody knows what that is like, you know, it's certainly the Latino community. So want to stand strong with them. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. If there's no more comments, at this point, I will move on to the SB 1383 Organics Recycling Presentation.
Hello. I don't know if you're able to get my presentation up and running. Okay, great. I have my notes on here, but just so you all know that I'm reading off from this side. So I wanted to introduce myself. My name is Melissa Gomez. I'm the Local Assistance and Market Development Liaison for Baldwin Park. And with me is Jeffrey Taylor, who is my supervisor, and Kara Morgan, who is our branch chief. So I'll be doing a high-level overview of the requirements of SB 1383. And then Kara will be available to do questions towards the end. Okay, so next slide, please. So why is 1383 important? Organic waste prizes are California's waste stream. And food waste alone is the largest waste stream in California, which is roughly 18% of disposal. But then with that, one in five children go hungry every night in California. Next slide, please. SB 1383 is also a part of California's larger strategy to combat climate change. So the law was designed to reduce global warming super pollutants like methane, which is up to 84 times more potent than carbon dioxide. So landfills are one of the largest producers of methane in the state. And as we know, organic material breaks down in the landfill and methane is generated. So we need to move away from landfilling organic waste, which includes food, paper, and yard waste. Next slide, please. So SB 1383 is a statewide target that requires California to reduce organic waste disposal by 75% and increase edible food recovery by 20% by 2025. Organic waste is defined broadly in the regulations and includes food waste, paper, cardboard, green waste, organic textiles, and carpet, lumber, wood, bio solids, digesting manure, and sludges. So it's a lot. Kira Cycle has been collaborating with jurisdictions and other stakeholders for the past three and a half years to complete the regulations, which went final November 3rd, 2020. While the regulations take effect in 2022, jurisdictions have to plan now so they can be in compliance by January 1st, 2022. Next slide, please. Sorry, my internet's so... So there are many benefits. If we're successfully implementing California's super pollutant reduction strategy, which also include improved air quality and less landfill waste. And it'll provide millions of meals to Californians. And it'll create thousands of new green jobs. Next slide, please. So here are some of the key implementation dates throughout the rulemaking process. And some of the dates to keep in mind is that the regulations became enforceable January 1st, 2022. This means that starting January 1st, 2022, jurisdictions must have their programs in place. And Kira Cycle can begin enforcement actions on jurisdictions and other entities. And in 2024, jurisdictions will be required to take enforcement against noncompliant entities. Next slide, please. So this is where we outline the city responsibilities. So this slide provides a brief overview of the program requirements that jurisdictions will be required to adequately staff and resource. We'll cover some of the points on this slide, but we'll briefly go through others and other slides. So number one, jurisdictions will be required to provide organic waste collection services to all resident and businesses. So what that means is that is you'll need to provide automatic service or universal service. So the resident and business is automatically provided the service rather than subscribing to it. And the regulations standardize container colors across the state, which will need to be implemented by January 1st, 2036, and require jurisdiction to place a label on each of the new container and lid provided to generators. And that will be starting January 1st, 2022. Second, jurisdictions... Oh, I'm sorry. So then there's also jurisdictions can issue three types of waivers to generators depending on de minimis, physical space, and collection frequency. So number two, jurisdictions must conduct annual education and outreach to generators. Three jurisdictions must also procure certain levels of recovered organic waste products, so compost, renewable gas, or electricity from biomass conversion. So what that means is each jurisdiction will have a minimum procurement target, and that is linked to the population. There are also requirements to purchase recycled content, paper, and paper products, but if price and performance is comparable. And Kira Cycle will notify jurisdictions of their target prior to January 1st, 2022. So number four, each jurisdiction plan for adequate capacity for recycling organic waste and edible food recovery. So each county would lead this effort by coordinating with cities, special districts that provide solid waste services, and regional agencies located within the county. And then Kira Cycle would provide a tool for organic waste capacity planning and edible food recovery capacity planning. So we'll provide that. And then lastly, jurisdictions must monitor compliance and conduct enforcement. So monitoring and education begins in 2022. And to reduce reporting, jurisdictions are required to maintain records and keep information in implementation record. So next slide, please. So SB 1383 extends beyond directing waste management and recycling operation staff. So this slide shows that every department within local government will be affected and will have a key role. Each department will need to understand how SB 1383 impacts their work. And jurisdictions should be thinking and planning for the staffing they will need, whether they task their direct service providers to staff some activities and whether they will contract with other entities such as environmental health inspectors or consultants. And next slide, please. So edible food requirements. Jurisdictions are responsible to implement edible food recovery programs in their communities. And so this includes providing education and outreach, assessing capacity of existing edible food recovery, and expanding existing infrastructure if necessary. Conducting inspections of Tier 1 commercial edible food generators and food recovery organizations and services beginning 2022, and inspections of Tier 2 commercial edible food generators beginning January 1st, 2024. Inspections should be at a level rate to adequately determine compliance of these requirements. But annual inspections of Tier 1 and Tier 2 edible food generators are not required. And beginning 2024, jurisdictions must take enforcement action on commercial edible food generators that are out of compliance with the edible food recovery requirements. There are also other record-keeping and reporting requirements. Next slide, please. So, key dates again. By January 1st, 2022, jurisdictions are required to have an enforcement mechanism or an ordinance in place. And between January 2022 and December 2023, jurisdictions need to identify businesses in violation of their regulatory requirements and provide educational materials to those generators. Beginning January 2024, jurisdictions must take progressive enforcement action against organic waste generators that are not in compliance. And an early, but an early robust education program will minimize that amount of enforcement. But then also, if a jurisdiction is automatically providing service to its residents and the commercial businesses, then there won't be... There shouldn't be a need to have any enforcement for recycling. Next slide, please. So this is what we're responsible for, so Kira Cycle in the state. In the case of entities such as public universities, school districts, federal facilities, which are exempt for local waste oversight, Kira Cycle will be directly responsible for ensuring compliance. But jurisdictions are required to provide education and outreach to these entities. Kira Cycle will be evaluating a jurisdiction's compliance and will be establishing a process for conducting jurisdiction audit. So it's gonna be a little different than what we're currently doing now. And will be establishing a process for conducting jurisdiction audit. So it's gonna be a little different than what we're currently doing now. Um, so SB thirteen eighty-three is a statewide target and not a jurisdiction, um, organic waste inversion target. So the department has included some aspects of flexibility and enforce and enforcement of the regulations. Which are similar to AB nine three nine's good faith effort requirements. But are tailored to to the different nature of SB thirteen eighty-three requirements. The regulations allow Kira Cycle to consider substantial efforts. So if you're doing a good amount of effort. Made by the jurisdiction and the placement uh, on a corrective action plan. So under the regulations, if Kira Cycle determines a jurisdiction is violating, what are the more requirements? Kira Cycle will provide compliance assistance. So that would include checklist, model tools, and trainings. Although Kira Cycle may begin penalty enforcement on regulated entities starting January first, twenty twenty-two. And the timeline for the enforcement process are not triggered until Kira Cycle issues a notice of violation. Once Kira Cycle determines enforcement actions or penalties are necessary, Kira Cycle will implement the process outlined in SB thirteen eighty-three. So the regulations include a compliance review and enforcement process that allows for extended timelines. For jurisdictions under certain under certain circumstances. And this could be up to three years from the the issuance of a notice of violation to come into compliance before penalties are issued. The timeline for department enforcement action over jurisdictions. Under the SB thirteen eighty-three regulations, if Kira Cycle makes a determination that a jurisdiction is violating one or more of their requirements. And Kira Cycle issues a notice of violation, a jurisdiction will have ninety days to correct its issue. But for cases for jurisdictions, if they need a little more time, the timeframe can be extended to a total of a hundred eighty days. From the date of the issues of a notice of violation. For violators that are due to barriers outside the jurisdiction's control, the time um. Which would be extenuating circumstances, the jurisdiction and and the jurisdiction has made a substantial effort. The regulations allow for the jurisdiction to be placed on a corrective action plan. And now allow for up to twenty-four months to comply with the date of issue of the notice of violation. So an initial corrective action plan issued due to inadequate organic waste recycling infrastructure capacity, which is a mouthful, I know. May be extended for a period of up to twelve months. If the jurisdiction has demonstrated substantial effort to Kira Cycle. And extenuating circumstances could include or do include earthquakes, wildfires wildfires. Flooding and other emergencies such as the pandemic or natural disasters. Um, delays in obtaining discretionary permits. Or other government agency approvals in organic waste recycling infrastructure capacity deficiency requiring more than a hundred eighty days to cure. But substantial effort is where a jurisdiction has done everything within its authority and ability to comply. It is not, it does not include circumstances where a decision-making body or a jurisdiction has not taken the necessary steps to comply. With the chapter including but not limited to a failure to provide adequate state resources to meet. Its obligations under this chapter, a failure to provide sufficient funding to meet the obligations. Or failure to adopt the ordinances or similarly enforceable mechanisms. If a jurisdiction does not demonstrate that they have made a substantial effort. They would be eligible, they will not be eligible for the two to three year extension, um, extended compliance deadlines. But penalties are imposed as a last resort after all compliance action has failed. So if a jurisdiction does not meet the deadlines and a notice of violation or corrective action plan. The department will determine whether to commence an action to impose penalties. If the department imposes administrative administrative civil penalties and shall serve an accusation and hold a hearing if requested by the respondent, which is usually a hundred eighty day process. So we have a lot to do. Next slide, please. So Kira Cycle is helping jurisdictions in a number of ways, including recently released four model tools. So we have a model franchise agreement. We have a model mandatory organic disposal reduction ordinance. We have model organic waste product procurement policy for compost, mulch, renewable gas, electricity. For bio from biomass and recycle content paper as well as a model edible food recovery agreement. And the R three local jurisdiction service rate study was made available to jurisdictions in early March. And we also have uh, case studies on jurisdictions that set rates. Funded infrastructure and educated public and elected officials. And there are other tools Kira Cycle is working on and will inform the city once they're released. Next slide, please. So these are ways to stay informed. So this is all the information. We do have a lot of this information online. And I also want to take the time to actually commend the city. So they have been working diligently towards implementing a program which meets SB thirteen eighty-three. We've been working together and they have submitted a timeline outlining the major items that they'll be working towards for compliance of SB thirteen eighty-three. And so some of the highlights include um, their continued outreach to multifamily and commercial businesses for compliance with current organics programs. And they're currently drafting two communication pieces to residents and businesses regarding thirteen eighty-three guidelines, implementation dates, and cart and bin rollouts. They've also been working with waste management, their hauler and other city departments to develop an implementation plan. And they're working towards developing a list of all tier one and tier two food generators as well as identifying local. Food distribution programs that would be interested in receiving these donations. And the city will be plans to propose residential food and green waste programs. With corresponding rates to city council for approval to implementation in January twenty twenty-two. Um, so city staff are very proactive and easy to work with and we really look forward to seeing the city continue. With this timeline to execute the program by January first, twenty twenty-two. This is the end of my presentation. Thank you so much for taking the time to listen to all of the all of this information.
Great. Thank you for being here. Uh, does uh, do any council members have any questions?
Hi, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Uh, thank you very much, Melissa and and your team. Um, you know, this is something that I think Sam briefed me back on. Sometime in two thousand nineteen or so. Uh, it's been it's been quite some time. Um, you know, perhaps you can just, if you can speak to uh. If residents here in Baldwin Park might have what would be considered now a fourth bin. Um, and also, you know, if there is, if there might be a service fee that will be charged onto their additional um. Bills, you know, to to help mitigate this, you know, the state law.
Melissa, you want to take that? I I can, I can, I can speak to that.
Yeah, please.
Yeah. Hi, good evening, council member. Um, yeah, so we're working with um, waste management so that it is not a fourth bin, so that it is just a third bin. Uh, a sort of like a blended or mixed uh, bin for uh, organics and green waste. Uh, so it'll be residents concerned, it'll be one uh, one bin.
Perfect. Um, and then in regards to costs, is there anything related to residents and or commercial businesses that might see a. A few nickels or pennies or whatever, whatever it might be?
Yes, so there is. And um, to implement the fee increase, there would have to be a Prop two eighteen. Um, uh, you know, public hearing and uh, waste management has submitted their proposed cost. We're currently uh, looking at that and. Uh, reviewing it, but we will definitely bring that back to the city council before we go out to the public for the public.
Perfect. Uh, thank you very much for Sam. And then just one other item for consideration for all of us. Considering that we have a lot of gardeners here in Baldwin Park, um, perhaps there's a way of, you know, try to also diverting some of this, uh, not only into the green waste. But there might be a way if we can look into um, compost bins that we could, you know, provide for apartment buildings and also for uh, residential. Residential homes, um, you know, as a as a gift to to, you know, kind of start this initiative. Um, I know other cities have done that over time, um, but if we can do something like that, uh, that would be, that would be a great start. So folks, you know, are able to uh, take advantage of, you know, one more diversion before even gets into that, you know, uh, you know. Compost compost uh, bin that you uh, that waste manager will pick up. There might be a way of, you know, uh, keeping it in their own backyards and spreading around and in their, you know, in their yards and so forth and have even greater or greener pastors per se.
Great, thank you. Any other council members have any questions or concerns, comments? No? Great. So thank you for that presentation. Thank you, Sam, and thank you, uh, Melissa and and team. I believe at this point we will uh, move to open a public communication. City clerk, is there anybody looking to comment?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, we have four individuals Javier Navarro, Frank Aguirre, Catherine Lozier, and Pedro Duran Duran, I'm sorry. I am going to defer to the deputy city clerk.
Excuse me, Karen. Thank you, Mayor. The first caller is Pedro Duran.
Hello?
Hi, is Pedro Duran available?
Hi. Yes, it's me.
Hi Pedro, I uh, this is Mayor Estrada. I'm calling you from the city of Baldwin Park. I believe you made a request for public communication.
Yes, I did, Mr. Mayor. Uh, to communicate you and to all the council members first. Um, I wanted to to talk about uh, fireworks. Uh, recently, uh, my wife and I decided to move to Baldwin Park that has a first house here. And we live in here with our pet, our dog. And recently, we've been getting a lot of fireworks and. Uh, around our neighborhood, around our block and from from the sound of it and the look, it looks like mostly they're probably legal. And by reading, seeing the ordinance, seeing code, uh, it's kind of robust, uh, uh, pretty cool to talk about it. Uh, but I wanted to bring that attention to the council and see if we could uh, some kind of ramp up on illegal fireworks. Because we fear that one of those fireworks may land on the house, may land on the roof and kind of burn down a house and then that becomes that. Uh, a big issue with the people who live there who had nothing to do with fireworks. Um, so I I as a as a as a P uh, somebody who lives here in Baldwin Park, I don't know how to say it, and what can we do to kind of uh. Improve on the on the city ordinance and laws that we have? Is there anything that we could do, petitions or ask for for better um. Just kind of what can we do to to improve on that? Uh, and on another topic, I also want to be able to uh, acknowledge um, uh, the community service officer, Cynthia Etsino. Which I had a good talk with her and a good communication. I really wasn't expecting that, uh, well communication from the. From from mostly uh, the the police department. I was very grateful to to hear her have have her call me whenever I had a. Comment to make and kind of walk me through what can I do and what the police department could do. So I want to acknowledge her great work. And that's that's pretty much all I have to say.
Great. Thank you for calling in, Pedro.
All right. Thank you very much. Have a great night.
All right, thank you. Take care. Thank you. City clerk, uh, who is next?
The next caller is Catherine Lozier.
Hello?
Hi, is this Catherine Lozier?
Yes, sir.
Hi, this is Mayor Estrada, uh, from the city of Baldwin Park. I am calling you regarding your request for public communication.
Great, thank you. So I'll go ahead and get started. Good evening, Honorable Mayor again, uh, Mayor, potential council members, community partners, and fellow community members. Thank you as always for this opportunity to speak. Um, again, I am the manager of the Baldwin Park Library. And tonight I wanted to share that the LA County Library is almost back. We are very excited to announce that we will be starting to free. Uh, we will start reopening reopening designated libraries for select in-person service. Starting on Monday, April nineteenth. During this tiered phase of reopening, the Baldwin Park Library will continue to offer sidewalk service. But some of our neighboring libraries will be included in this initial phase of the reopening and those libraries include West Covina Library. El Monte Library and Duarte Library. And the services that they will be offering will include browsing the collection and checking out items. Customers may use public computers for up to one hour per day. They'll be able to print and again, it's ten free pages per day. They'll be able to pick up holds. They'll be able to conduct brief interactions with a reference librarian to find materials and information and there'll be free wifi. Uh, and then for more information about this reopening, you can check the library's website at, excuse me, lacountylibrary.org. Forward slash reopening and you're welcome to give us a call at Baldwin Park Library at six two six nine six two six nine four seven. And then also this week, we have launched our spring and summer discovery program. This is a program where you can read books, uh, log your log the books that you've read. And earn prizes over the course of the spring and the summer. So more information on on both of these services, you can again, check the website or give us a call again at six two six. Nine six two six nine four seven. Thank you.
Great, thank you. Thank you for that.
Next caller.
Oh, sorry.
Frank Aguirre Junior.
Your call has been forwarded.
Do you want to try one more time, city clerk?
Yes.
Thank you.
Your call has been forwarded.
So I think um, we can move on to the next one, city clerk.
Next caller is Javier Navarro.
Hello?
Hi, is this Javier Navarro?
Uh, yes, it is.
Hi, this is Mayor Estrada, city of Baldwin Park. I am calling you regarding your request for public communication.
Okay, I'm gonna start speaking now. Uh, good evening, uh, Mayor and council members. First of all, I want to thank Manny and Maria and everybody and everyone involved with the Spring Fest drive-through, the event. It was, I mean, everything was so well organized, the traffic, the flow of traffic and everything. It was a great improvement over the Halloween event from last year. So again, thank you for everyone. And second, I just want to know what's happening with the new lights that were supposed to be put on Ramona Boulevard. I mean, I I was told back in October of last year that it was when it happened the first of the year. Here we are four months later and Ramona Boulevard is still dark. I mean, uh, from what I was told, the lights are at the city yard. So I I mean, I I mean, I don't know what's happening with the Ramona being dark. Uh, Maria Moreno, she took care of the lights around the park, Morgan Park. There there's lights everywhere. There are no dark spots. So I I don't know what's going on with the uh, with the lights. Uh, why can't they be repaired? The ones that are there right now and then you can take all the time you want to put in the new fixtures. I mean, that's all that's all I want to know. So I'll wait for your comments at the end of the public speaking. Thank you very much.
Great. Thank you for calling in. And so maybe we can start off with that comment. Sam, do you have an update on the downtown? I know that it's kind of started kicking into gear right now. We're seeing more cones along the sidewalks and it's starting to take off, right?
Absolutely. So the contractor has mobilized. They've established a yard. We are about to move all of the streetlight poles over to the yard, which is on Bedillo. You're going to start seeing the work for the streetlights within the next couple of weeks. We're going to ramp that up. We're going to start doing the traffic signals, and then we're going to be installing 36 streetlights.
Great.
Uh, just got to bear with us a little bit longer. Uh, we're getting there and we should have Ramona Boulevard lit up pretty well.
Yeah, and I, and I think we're all geared for that. So maybe, Sam, can you just kind of reiterate? I know a lot of people have been reaching out to council members, including myself, and they've kind of been wondering, you know, what's going to happen in the downtown area?
Yes. So this is a, a combination of various CIP projects put together, mashed up into one big project. So we're going to be bringing in, upgrading traffic signal lighting to decorative lighting at three intersections. We're going to be replacing all of these old shoebox lights, streetlights, 36 of them. We're going to be installing that. We're going to be installing wide decorative crosswalks, site furniture, some signage. And it'll be capped off by a big public work, sorry, public art structure that is going to be featured right on Ramona. So the work has started and we're about to ramp up.
Great. Thank you for that update, Sam.
You're welcome.
Mr. Mayor, if I may?
Uh, yeah, Councilmember Hernandez.
Thank you. Sam, um, can we just make sure staff goes, you know, drives by in the evenings to, you know, just to verify that, you know, all the lights? Or there's some lights along Ramona Boulevard? Because I, I know at times they've literally just been, you know, blacked out. So this is a concern of, you know, not only of Mr. Javier, Javier, but others of, you know, just public safety of making sure that we have some sort of lighting out there along the routes. I can't imagine that they're all out, but you know, it's been a while since I've driven or even walked out there in the evening. But if we can just, just go out there and verify that, you know, it's not complete blackout. And if there's areas in which we could just, you know, fix some, because I know we don't want to spend money only to remove them in a short period of time. But if we could try to mitigate some of the safety concerns that some of the pedestrians might be having while they're out there walking their dogs or getting some exercise in the evening, especially now that the summer months are going to be coming. Oh, it seems like summer is already here from, from time to time, but that would greatly appreciate it. And I think that will certainly address the concern of Javier and some other folks that have all contacted us all over the last couple of weeks and months.
Absolutely. Yeah, we'll do an audit and we'll fix the ones where, where it makes sense and, you know, try to get it lit up as, as quickly as possible.
Great. Thank you for that. And then I believe, and then somebody touched on fireworks and I, and I think they brought it up right on time. We are almost in that, uh, we are, we are almost at July. So I think maybe it's something to keep an eye on. And then, of course, a discussion with chief later on. I know, I know last year was probably one of the biggest, uh, I've never heard so many fireworks in my life, but I think that just, just pertained to the, you know, we had just started the the stay-at-home orders and I think everybody was staying home. So I'm not entirely sure how this year will go. So something to keep an eye on and, and keep a discussion going about. And then I'm glad some of these, some of the callers highlighted our, our, our staff. And I think it's great when they call in and highlight our staff. I know, you know, they mentioned Manny and Maria. And I, and I think I, every, every council member is thankful for them. They've doing, they've been doing an amazing job. They've been taking care of the food distribution. They've been taking care of the vaccines. And then they just recently had that Easter festival. And I, so I'm, 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 I'm excited for all the successful events that Parks and Rec has been able to pull off. So I wanted to thank Parks and, Parks and Rec. And then, of course, we, somebody else mentioned Cynthia, and I think that's another stellar staff member. I think she's probably one of the most popular around here. So I'm always looking forward to hearing great things about, you know, the, the relationship she's able to have with our constituents and, and her being a, 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 a positive factor in our police department. So I'm grateful for that as well. I don't know if any of the other council members have any comments, questions, or concerns?
Mayor, I just want to echo your comments about our great staff. And, you know, with our response to COVID-19 and just how, how staff has really been working so hard to deliver services to our residents and to different constituents in our community in a, in a different format. It was just, you know, so much creativity, so much hard work, so much flexibility. And I just want to express how appreciative, you know, I am for the day-to-day, just hard work that, that they're doing. And if there's any way that we can give a special recognition, I feel like we're coming to, you know, the light at the end of the tunnel with regard to COVID. And if there's something that we can do perhaps before, you know, Shannon completely retires, just so that we could really give, you know, just as much recognition to our city staff and how everybody pitched in and, and, and did things different. And that's such a big deal for an organization. And, you know, not only did things different and, and, you know, provided the flexibility to do that, but did so swiftly in response to the needs of, of what we had experienced in this last year. So I just, I hope that we can put our heads together and figure out some, some really special way to recognize them for their efforts. Because, you know, with, I don't know, we had like six or more test sites. Now we have this major vaccination site, partnership with Kaiser. We've had several partnerships, you know, with the vaccination sites now underway or already completed. I, I checked in with our Director of Recreation and Community Services, Manny Carillo, and he informed me that nearly 80,000 meals were delivered to seniors from the time that we began, you know, I guess, March of last year, delivering to the seniors' homes to, to date, nearly 80,000 meals have been delivered. And, you know, it's just, we really need to recognize all the efforts that went into our response as a city. And I hope that we can put our heads together to figure that out soon.
Yeah, and I, I agree, I agree. I think our, our staff has done phenomenally well. And, you know, they, they really, they've gotten us through the pandemic. And they, and by all means, they deserve all the recognition and praise. So I have, I, I agree with Councilmember Garcia. We should get together and figure out how we can show our appreciation to our staff. City Clerk, is there any more public communication?
No, Mayor.
Great. So I believe at this point, we're ready to move on from public communication. I will close public communications and we can move on to our consent calendar. And then if there's any items council members are looking to pull, I will make a motion to, well, not a motion, I would like to pull item number 10.
I'd like to pull item number three, please.
Any other items? Great. So if not, at this point, I will make a motion to pass consent calendar excluding items number 10 and number three. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Any objections? No? So those items pass, and then I will give the floor to Mayor Pro Tem Avila.
Thank you, Mayor Estrada. I want to pull item number three. I want to bring it back until we have more information on this item. So may possibly bring it back to the next meeting, please.
Great. Second? Oh, is that a motion? Sorry.
Motion, yes.
Okay, second.
Okay.
Any objections? No? So we can move that item over, and then I will make the motion to table item number 10. Can I get a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any objections? No? So we will table that item. And I believe at this point, we do have a public hearing, and that is for fiscal year 2021 to 2022, annual action plan, housing, and community development needs and priorities, and priorities public hearing. So at this motion, at this time, I will open up the public hearing. City Clerk, is there anybody looking to speak in favor or against?
No, Mayor.
Great. So at this point, I will move to close the public hearing. And then I will make a motion to receive and file a report. Can I get a second?
Okay.
Are there any objections? None? So that item passes. And then I believe at this point, we are at City Council, City Clerk, City Treasurer, Staff Request, and Communications. And so I did have a couple of items on here I, I wanted to discuss. I did want to talk about a, a discussion and direction to staff to reinstate funding for, for a virtual state of the city address event. I think our city has really pulled it together, and I think it's, it's, uh, you know, it's well worth making the effort to, to let our, our constituents and our residents know where we're at after the pandemic. So I don't know if any council members have any questions, concerns, or discussion?
I think it's a great idea.
Great. So I think at this point, we have a, a clear consensus that this is something that we'd like staff to look into.
Yes.
Great. And then I did have another request, and that's a City Council discussion and consideration to staff to create a policy nominating a Resident of the Year annually. So I've seen our, I believe our State Center and our Assemblywoman and, you know, they have their, they have their nominees to nominate for the year. And I think it'd be a great time now for the city of Baldwin Park to start recognizing our residents. You know, if this pandemic has taught us anything, is that our residents are willing to go out there and, and really, and get their hands in there and, and, and volunteer and make efforts for their community and their well-being. And I, and I think that they deserve recognition, and I think this is a great program. We can have some sort of application process where somebody can nominate a resident. We can, we can recognize that resident maybe once a year. And I, and I think it'd be a, a great way to recognize our community for the efforts that they make.
Yeah.
The ultimate efforts that they make, I should say.
Yes.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, council member.
Thank you. Can I make perhaps a consideration? Instead of just, because we have so many great residents, instead of just doing for one, maybe we do three or five folks. And maybe, you know, one of those, one of those recognizes, you know, one, a student or two. Because, you know, we have a lot of great folks that contribute their time. Instead of just, you know, focusing on one, otherwise, unfortunately, we'll never be able to recognize everyone in our great city that, that should. But at least, you know, a, a few more than just one may give us a little bit more breathing room to, to do that, if you're okay with that recommendation.
Yeah, and I think we can do maybe, you know, we could do like a one for maybe young teens or adolescents, and then we do one for adults. I know Parks and Rec has that, what is it? They have like a, a pun in there, right? The keep Baldwin Park beautiful. But they put tea in there somewhere, right? So I know that there's a lot of teens that are active in their community. They, I think some of them are part of Key Club, or they're just part of the programs at the teen center or maybe at Parks and Rec. So yeah, I wouldn't mind that. I think that's a great idea as well. We can recognize our youth.
Perfect. Thank you.
Great. And then I didn't write this down, but I, I thought of it. I don't know if Sam maybe can answer this one. I saw that the, the sign is still by St. John's where they were announcing the Easter, the Easter event. So I don't know, maybe we can use those to place around the city and, and let people know that vaccines are available in Baldwin Park.
Yes, yeah. Thank you, Mayor. Yeah, I, I will look into it. First thing tomorrow morning, we do have some signage and we can bring other signage if we need to.
Great. So I, and, and that's another great effort, a successful effort, I should say, on behalf of city staff is, is getting that, that partnership with, with Kaiser and, and, you know, it's going to be there. And, you know, the, the residents, we want to make sure that every resident is aware of this and, and that they're taking advantage of it. So I think this is really the time to ramp up those efforts on letting everybody know about it. So thank you. Great. And I don't know if any other council members have any comments, requests?
Mayor? Go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Thank you. Yes, I would like, um, I would like staff to review with us the zoning standards and the processes that are done when we zone our areas or amend zones. I'm not very familiar with it, so we can review all those standards. And also, what is the process of business goes through when wanting to come into our city? How soon do you notify the council that a business is coming in? And how do we expedite these processes so we don't discourage businesses from leaving? So I, I really would like staff to provide all this information to us, so, and have it up on our websites. I, I'm sure you are, you already have something, but that it's clear for those wanting to come in and have businesses here and make the process faster and easier for them so that they don't get discouraged. That is all.
Great. And I think that's, that's great, because then a lot of times they ask us about zoning and things like that, and we can be better well-rounded on the, on the situations.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. On that note, can we get an update from Ron Garcia or Ben Martinez regarding the specific plan update? And I really would like the presentation to highlight the changes from the old specific plan and what's being considered or proposed in the new before we adopt the, the, you know, final document. So if we can get a presentation that really highlights the changes, or, you know, maybe the updates, I would greatly appreciate that.
I could ask, hi, Mayor and City Council, Ben Martinez, Community Development Director. I can either ask Ron if he wants to give a brief presentation right now, if you'd like that, or we can prepare something.
Uh, you know what? Yeah, now is not the time because we didn't agendize it. But thank you for that. I would say, let's just prepare to do that however you feel is best. If you just want to quickly highlight some of the proposed changes, like in density and things like that, that would be helpful so that we can consider. And I think it, it ties into what Mayor Pro Tem Alejandro Avila is asking for as well.
Yes, we will do that. And also we'll be approaching the Mayor and City Council on the community with the upcoming dates and next steps very soon. So thank you. We'll do that.
Thank you, Ben. Councilmember Garcia, if I could just add to what Ben mentioned. Right now, we, the draft of the specific plan has been turned over to the, the consultant. And we're looking at May, June for a joint study session with the Planning Commission and the City Council to go over the draft of the downtown specific plan that was presented during the charrette back in October. So we're really looking forward to bringing that to the Planning Commission and the City Council. And we'll, as Ben mentioned, we'll be sure to highlight those key differences, as you mentioned.
Thank you.
So at that point in time, the entire council will have the ability to study, study the entire downtown specific plan, right? Not just the highlighted of the, of the updated changes?
That is correct. So I'm sorry, should have been a little more specific. When we have that joint study session with the council and the planning commission to go over the, the draft document, the document would have already been released to the public and available to the council, planning commission, and the community to review that document in preparation for that joint study session.
Okay. Great. So thank you for that. And then City Chief Deputy City Clerk? Is, are you there?
Yes, Mayor, I'm here.
Great. So I believe that we have to make an attempt to call somebody else, correct?
That's correct, Mayor.
So at this point, I'm going to, and then City Attorney, if I don't say your name right, please correct me. But at this point, I will make, I will open up the public communications again. And then who is our caller?
Uh, it's David Torres Segres.
Great, thank you. Hi, is this Mr. Segres?
Yes.
Hi, this is Mayor Estrada, city of Baldwin Park, and I'm calling you regarding your request for public communication.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. May I begin?
Yes, and then just keep in mind, you do have three minutes, okay?
Sure. Thank you so much, sir. Good evening, honorable members of the City Council. My name is David Torres Segres, and I'm here tonight on behalf of my clients who are commercial cannabis operators within the city. The city on its special council agenda tonight had, quote, "real property negotiations pursuant to the government code." And cannabis owner-operators are listed. What exactly is being negotiated every single special meeting in closed session regarding cannabis? The city has told my clients multiple times, we won't negotiate. The city has told my clients multiple times, we won't negotiate. We won't change your development agreements. But recently, in late January of this year, this council radically modified the development agreement. You canceled all of Rootley Inc.'s debt owed to the city. You gave them cultivation and manufacturing license for free for 2021. The same two licenses that you want to charge my clients almost $300,000 a piece for. And this was all a result of a lawsuit that I filed on behalf of my client, in which the city and Rootley had no causes of action against each other. They weren't, you guys weren't adversaries. Even the recent cannabis compliance hearings are suspect. This, the assistant city attorney who attended and even ran a compliance hearing is a principal of the cannabis owner operator. This guy even executed a development agreement with the city of Ballin Park. How's that not a blatant conflict? And the mitigation fees, what exactly are the mitigation fees being used for? Where are the correlative studies between cannabis impacts and the fees the city is collecting? And how can a non-operational cannabis business even have an impact on the city? The city's own documents show that cannabis mitigation fees are being used for general revenue purposes. And let's talk about racial disparity created by the development agreements. Thankfully on your agenda tonight, the city denounces Asian hate crime by way of a proclamation. We commend you for doing that. However, the city's very own commercial cannabis fee structure discriminates against Asian and Latino owner operators. If you're Russian Armenian owner operators like Rootley and Arti Tropicana, you pay nothing for nearly four years, which equates to millions of dollars in concessions. But if you're a Latino Asian owner operator like my clients, you pay full price right away and the city threatens you with yanking your license if you don't pay up. There's a solution here. Conform the process so that the fees are all the same, equal for everybody, regardless of who you are or who you know. Don't give anybody a favored nation clause like you did a Rootley. Start charging fees at this time and occupancy permit is granted, not before. You don't have to make refunds here. You just can give credits to people that have already paid. Charge fees based on actual square footage. Don't charge somebody who only has 3,000 square feet for 22,000 square feet. Lastly, what is the city doing about the corruption that former councilman Pacheco admitted to in federal court that was made known in January? 14 pages of that indictment remain sealed.
Mr. Seagrest?
Defense attorneys served as special counsel.
Mr. Seagrest, your, your three minutes are up.
Thank you. Thank you, uh, council. I really appreciate it. Thank you so much, mayor.
Yeah. Thank you. Thank you for calling in. Um, and then I believe that, uh, city chief deputy city clerk, that is the last caller, correct?
Last caller. Thank you, mayor.
Great. Thank you. And of course, uh, we're city attorney. If I say something I shouldn't, please stop me. Uh, but this council by far is not, uh, racist or prejudiced against anybody. I never even met any of these owner operators. I don't know what they look like. We, we, when we negotiate with these operators, we negotiate, uh, from organization to organization. So.
That, that is correct, Mr. Mayor. There, there's nothing discriminatory in any of these agreements. Uh, the agreements that Mr. Sequest is talking about were negotiated by their lawyers and they were signed by them. And this is just an attempt not to pay their fees in my opinion, but no, there's no discriminatory actions by the city. And, uh, the development agreements are not discriminatory in any way. They're just contracts. They're contracts is all they are.
Great. Thank you. And I, and I just felt that it was important that we, that we stress on the fact that we are not acting based on any sort of protected class. At this moment, uh, I will move to close public communication.
Mayor?
Yes, Councilmember Garcia.
Thank you. I'd like to add something to that. I want to just clarify for the public's information that the reason why we revisited the Rootley exclusive distribution, uh, was not because of a lawsuit that was brought upon us. Um, in fact, we prevailed in that lawsuit and a judge ruled that, um, we had done, you know, uh, nothing illegal or unethical or, um, but we, the reason why we did revisit this distribution, uh, exclusive distribution agreement was because we wanted to create a model that was more successful for the current operators. And, uh, we had been hearing for a couple of years that the previous model was not, you know, it wasn't the best, uh, for them. And so we revisited the item and, and, um, you know, we, we did so as a policy. Uh, discussion and a policy direction, not in response to a lawsuit. So I just wanted to clear that up for the record. Thank you.
Of course. And that wasn't a, and what happened with Rootley wasn't a we, a fee wave. We didn't give them anything for free. We negotiated in order to get rid of that exclusivity, which in turn benefits every single one of these distributors and, uh, every one of these potential distributors and current operators and owners. Because now they can, they can be, they can vertically, uh, operate. So you know, this isn't, uh, what the, the speculation that it's been made out to be. Uh, you know, this council takes the efforts of transparency and, 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 and the honest and, um, and fair deals, uh, you know, that's one of our priorities. And that's what we've talked about, being transparent about these things and making sure that we treat every single operator equally. So of course, this is, uh, you know, just for everybody's information, this is something that has been coming up. I know that there's a lot of what ifs, what ifs, but council cannot act on what ifs. We don't have a legal basis to do so and that wouldn't be appropriate to do so. Um, so I'll say that and that's about it. So at this point.
Uh, mayor? If I may?
Yes.
And I just want to also just, uh, just for, since we're on the record, I also want to include that the majority of us were not present back in 2017, when some of these, um, development agreements were being negotiated or signed. Uh, so therefore we've come in, you and myself came in December, uh, council member Alejandro and, uh, Vice Mayor Abila and Councilmember Hernandez came in, in 2018. And so it's now something that we're having to deal with. And obviously there's a lot of us, a lot of things for us to research, but we also cannot forget that these were development agreements that were signed and agreed upon by, uh, the majority of, by all of these cannabis, uh, companies. So uh, at the end of the day, it's not something that we negotiated as a council, might've been the prior council. Now we're just trying to address what we have in front of us. Uh, but at the end of the day, these were operating agreements that were signed. Thank you, mayor.
Thank you. And I just want to make, uh, I don't know if any of the council members have any comments. Um, but I do, I do want to make one more point and that's, and, and I know Mayor Pro Tem has heard me before say that. And I've talked about the importance of, 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 uh, having cannabis be a fair industry. And I've talked about the social, uh, equity opportunity there because cannabis in the past has hurt people like us. It's hurt minorities. It's hurt people of color. It's hurt disadvantaged communities. And so as we look forward, we're looking to make this successful. It's here. It needs to be a successful industry and it needs to benefit those that it once hurt. And Mayor Pro Tem, I don't mean to put you on the spot, but I believe you've heard me, you've, you've heard me tell people that, you know? And so, you know, I, I, I don't, I'm not fond of any sort of accusation that we are being prejudiced based on a protected class.
Mayor, by me?
Yes, Mayor Pro Tem.
And I just want to echo, um, what council member Garcia has said, or council member Damon has said. You know, these are, are contracts that, that were signed by these, um, cannabis individuals. They knew what they were signing. They, they agreed on the contract. And these are fees that are due to us, to the city. So i- it's nothing, um, that we have done. And even if it was the previous council that was in place, it was a contract that everybody agreed on. Not that the previous council did anything wrong. It's a contract that was presented to them. They agreed on it and they signed it. So it's a binding contract. So now they have to abide by that contract. And we are trying to be transparent moving forward. We're making sure that everybody i- is getting the same agreement. And we're making sure that is again, transparent to make sure that everybody's being, being treated fairly. We can't change what was done back in 2017, but we do need to make sure that these contracts are, are being honored. And that is all I have to say. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Mayor Pro Tem. Uh, and I believe at this point we are at the point of adjournment. And just before I adjourn, I'll open up. So I'll call to order the Ballin Park Housing Authority virtual meeting. And then I'll make a motion to pass consent calendar. Uh, and there's one item there. So can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Thank you. Any objections? No. So, uh, content calendar passes and I believe we have a public hearing, the Ballin Park Housing Authorities, Public Housing Agency, fiscal year 2021 to 2022 annual plan. Um, and then, so at this point, I'll make a motion to open up the public hearing. City clerk, is there anybody looking to speak in favor or against?
There are no speakers, mayor.
Great. Thank you. So at this point I do move to close that public hearing. And I make a motion to approve resolution number 22, number HA 2021 dash 001, establishing the adoption of the plan as required by the US Department of Housing and Urban Development. Can I get a second?
Second.
Great. Is there any objections? Nope. So at this point I do move to adjourn the housing authority regular virtual meeting. Can I get a second? Great. Thank you. And then at this point I move to adjourn the Ballin Park.
Mayor? Uh, really, briefly, before you adjourn, I completely forgot. Uh, I would like to close on behalf of, uh, Felipe Sida Carrillo, uh, who passed away on March 24th. Uh, his mom, Maria Carrillo, is someone who's been very active in our community, who's a part of LA Voice. And, um, señora Carrillo, no más les queremos mandar, uh, nuestra, uh, nuestro más sincero pésame por la, el fallecimiento de su hijo Felipe. Uh, y los, lo tenemos a ustedes en, en nuestras oraciones. Gracias. Thank you, mayor.
Yes. And thank you for bringing up, uh, bringing that up, Councilmember Damon. My, my condolences go to Maria and her family as well. Um, all of us that know, Doña Mari, know that she's involved and she is one of the most, uh, you know, she's one of the most outspoken people I know in the, in the city. And she's always pushing for things. She was there when we were talking about housing. She's there when we're talking about other, uh, issues that, that, that impact our community. So of course, todos estamos aquí para Doña Mari and, and her family. And, and of course I want to send my condolences to her as well. So. And then, so at this point, I will, uh, move to close, uh, to adjourn the Ballin Park city council regular meeting. Can I get a second?
Second.
Any objections? No. Meeting is adjourned. Thank you, everybody.
Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.